Okay, thank you to everybody who's still listening online. I know the meeting is going on this evening, but each of these papers are very much worthy of the depth of discussion that they warrant here. We now move on to item nine, which is a report on the vision for a sustainable decarbonised future for the Winchester district. Which has two parts, I believe, Mr Lincoln, and that you're going to introduce it. Would you like to do that? And I know that we're going to be assisted by Chris Holloway from Winchester Action for climate change and also from the Wessex Green Hub. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair, thanks members. The report itself is deliberately brief, primarily as it sets the scene for that information that our guest, Chris, and Will will be providing to us. There's a myriad of ways in which we might choose to try and tackle the district carbon footprint and aim and work towards our 2030 target. Everyone, every organisation has a view on which are the right ideas and which are the best ways to go about doing that. And this was discussed again just last night at the first Climate Elegance open forum that you mentioned. As was mentioned in the first paper tonight, resources are particularly precious at the current time, so we really want to identify the things that are going to make the most difference and to identify the most timely manner in which to try and introduce and to work on those things. So firstly, Chris will explain a little bit about the latest data that we're accumulating about the district and what it tells us. And then Will, mainly from the Wessex Green Hub, will talk us through some really interesting thinking that they've been doing for us on a model that might form the basis of this roadmap. I think that's probably what we'll need to say for now. Thank you, Chair.
And thank you, Mr Lincoln. And Chris Holloway, thank you so much for waiting so patiently for your turn. So we're looking forward to hearing your introduction to the paper, opening those we have in the paper. Thank you.
I think Alex Eburn, who is up on the screen over there, he's going to be showing some slides for me. I'm hoping. Yes, I can. It looks like they might be about to arrive, Alex. Fantastic. Wonderful. So I'll just say next when we get to the next bit. I expect most of you know me. I'm the Chair for Winchester Action on Climate Change. We just decided we might start calling ourselves Winchester Action on the Climate Crisis instead, especially as the initiatives still work. Where for the last 10 years, Bob Whitmarsh, who is also up there on the screen, has written a report on Winchester's district emissions. This is the 11th of those reports and on this occasion, he was helpfully, he was writing it together with another winner, colleague Robin Speed. But both of them were two defendants come along and actually report you to. Why does this keep cutting out? Am I doing the wrong thing?
No, it's probably a different one. We're just trying to get you possibly a difficult one, Chris.
Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. So Bob is here to answer difficult questions. I'm just here to do the presentation. Could I have the first slide, please? Next line. You obviously can't see that, but that doesn't matter because all you really need to see are the top two lines. The top line is emissions from transport on the roads. And the other thing you need to know is that that is the spread between 2005 and 2019, which is the most recent figures we've got. And as you can see, everything is pretty much the same, apart from the blue line. And what's the blue line? It's electricity that comes out of our sockets. It's electricity produced and sent out nationally on the national grid. That's going down because the government decided that we weren't going to have any more coal-fired power stations. Otherwise, everything's going to be remaining pretty much the same. And that's a really important message because it shows the scale of what we've got to do. If we could have the next slide, please.
Mr Gillan, can we please ask you to turn your camera off and mute yourself if you don't mind because it affects the sound quality? Thank you.
The next slide, the blue line, shows the decrease in emissions between 2005 and now, or 2019 when figures came up, including the decrease that's been caused by coal being taken out of our national electricity supply. The orange-yellow line is emissions if you don't include national electricity. And what you can see from that is that national electricity has been going down, but the line continues with the dots, but then it stopped suddenly. And that's because that's the point at which all the coal has been taken out of our national electricity supply in 2024. The greeny-orange line went down quite a bit the first five or 10 years, and then it flattened out and it's been bouncing along a little bit up and a little bit down for the last, I'll need to look at my own to see exactly when, since about 2014. It might have gone down a bit in 2019, as you can see, but whether that's a trend or whether that's just a hiccup because of the bouncing up and down, we can't tell until we get the 2020 figures. But the dotted line from that is how much we need to cut if we're really going to hit carbon neutrality by 2030. It is an amazing drop. It's far more than anything we've achieved since 2005, even at the very beginning. So we really, really have to concentrate on what else can we do. We can't just sit back and think, okay, government change is going to do it for us. The next slide, please, is a very simple one, and it just reaffirms the point that the grand bit, roughly half of the emissions in the district come from transport. I'm saying roughly half because as we were just discussing before, it depends on whether or not you include transport on the motorway, and then you get into a complicated argument about how much the transport on the motorway is witches to people anyway. But let's call it half and say in this conversation, it's still absolutely the largest chunk that we need to tackle. Okay, so we lack, what we've been trying to do is to look at the data rather than to talk about, you know, our theories or something. Because we do understand that we're just one set of people and we might think we know what we're talking about, we come up with all sorts of ideas, but just like councillor Todd was helpfully saying about the transport ideas, you know, sometimes you look into them in more detail and you realise that something that looked like a good idea didn't always completely work. So what we wanted is to have ideas on the table for discussion, not saying this is definitely the right answer. But we think that the data shows pretty clearly what the main areas are for cuts. And obviously, transport is very, very high up on the list. If you could show me the next slide, please. It's cutting emissions from internal combustion engines is basically what we're talking about. The other changes that will make the biggest impact on the climate are cutting emissions from heating for our buildings and particularly our homes, cutting emissions from big buildings. I put that rather vaguely because if you look at the data, you say, yes, we are talking about business or the corporate sector, but actually I don't think the data makes distinction between profit-making businesses and non-profit-making businesses like hospitals and the county council and the city council. So basically, we're talking about emissions from big organisations. And those are the three areas to cut. The data also shows that fostering sustainable use of land can make a difference because even now, our land is a net, it's always difficult to explain. It absorbs more greenhouse gases than it produces. And if we were to look after it in different ways, farm more, stop cutting down trees, plant a few more, it could do even better. The last two things are more difficult to count because they're not directly about direct emissions in Winchester district, but when you look at the other things that could make a real difference, it's green investment and more generation of renewable energy. Could I have the next slide, please? This just very quickly gives you an impression about renewable energy situation. That little green blob at the bottom is the amount of renewable energy that we actually create in Winchester district at the moment. The slightly smaller green blob above it is the amount of renewable energy we use in Winchester district at the moment, which is about three or four times as much. The bigger, longer green blob at the top is the amount of renewable energy that we will need in Winchester district if we're going to replace the other things that are currently fuelled in by fossil fuels. So it's, you can see there is an immense difference between, even now, there's a pretty big difference between what we generate and what we use. And when you look at how much we're going to need to use in order to decarbonise our energy supply, there's a really dramatic difference. So we need more renewable energy in Winchester. Just moving on to the next slide. These are just our suggestions for the city council, not in terms of what to do, but in terms of how to do it. And I'm very interested how much it fits in with the discussion you're just having because we're obviously concentrating on where you can have the biggest impact. Do things quickly and do things in partnership and do your best to get money to do it with and make the best use of the assets you've got, which is exactly the conversation you're just having about working in partnership with the city, with the county council in order to do the transport. And as councillor Ferguson quoted me yesterday, public opinion is changing fast and much better if the city council leaves it and lets behind. I haven't really talked in any detail about the detailed findings in the report. That's because the report is going to be available fairly soon. We're an absolutely fine graph station just waiting for people to proofread it and point out the missing false stops. It has loads and loads of data in it. It has loads and loads of other suggestions about things you might do. So what I would like to say is if you have questions about the data that you want to ask now, I'm going to ask Bob Whitmarsh to answer them because he knows it much better than I do. And please, can you tell me before I go home tonight, at what forum and in what way can we talk about some of our recommendations for things that need to be done? Thanks very much indeed for making time to listen.
Thank you very much, Chris Holloway. Before we move on to the second part of the presentation, do any members that we have left and we have lost, two of our members of the committee already, do you have any specific questions you would like to ask Chris? I can ask the last one.
Thank you, Chair. Chris, just out of interest, how does Winchester district have other districts? Is that trajectory the same or don't you have that information?
What I do know is that the average carbon footprint of people living in Winchester is higher than the average according to public, and that's exactly what you'd expect because Winchester is a comparatively speaking well-off place. I mean, of course, there are people here who are well-off, but on average, a Winchester citizen has more money to spend than the average UK citizen, and that means that they have more money to spend on international flights and heating their houses and things. In terms of trajectory, it is incredibly difficult to tell because anybody's only two years into their carbon plan and the government data is two years old, so we don't really know what impact it's, the changes have been having. Unless Bob's got anything he wants to say, then I don't know.
Well, it's true, it's true that the emissions per head in Winchester district are greater than, I think, all the surrounding local authorities, which there are about six or eight. And we went into that in some detail. I can't remember if it was last year's report or the report before.
Thank you, Mr Whitmarsh. And so for most, did you also have a question?
I do, thank you, Chair. I've got, actually, I've got a couple of questions. My first question is a little bit of a nerdy question about the first graph. I have a background in forecasting stuff, so I want to make sure I really understood what that chart is showing. I don't know, Alex, if you can bring it back up on the chart, just so I'm not describing it abstractly. It's the first chart, which shows the blue line, blue line coming down, and then the orange line not going down as fast. But essentially, I think it's basically historical data up to 2019, maybe 2020, and then the blue line is a projection up to 2024. So it's a, this is what I think is going to happen. The second chart, next one along, please, Alex. That's it? Perfect. So the, the blue line is projection up to 2024. The orange line is just where it stops up to 2020. And then I think beyond that, what that's describing is not a projection of what will be, it's a what needs to be done. And, and what I would suggest is a way to alarm people more would be to, to change that chart into a projection of what will happen unless we make significant changes. Because that could easily be interpreted as, oh, everything's all right, things are going to happen from 2024. So have I understood, have I understood it correctly?
Yes, you've understood it exactly right, and that's a very good point. And I shall go back and have a conversation with Bob, and we'll see if we can put both this one and the one you're suggesting side by side so that you can get the idea. Well, I did, I think it's a very sensible suggestion.
Okay. And my other question, if there's no one else trying to jump in onto the floor, is the data here seems to be based on BEIS, which I don't have an intimate knowledge of what that source is. I've heard of it before, so I guess it's, you know, reasonably reliable. But how reliable is that source in terms of the data for Winchester when it's extrapolated from probably something which covers the whole country or something, a bigger entity than just Winchester?
I'll ask Bob to expand on this, but briefly, BEIS is the Government Department of Business and Public Energy, a industrial strategy. And they actually do have statistics because they know how much gas and electricity and petrol is used in different areas. So those figures are actually, I believe, not an extrapolation, they are actually reliable. The, our full reports also got some other figures which are quite often extrapolations and intelligent estimates about things like what they call imported emissions, in other words, where we bought things abroad, whether it's stocks and shares or clothes or vacuum cleaners. Bob, is there anything you want to add to that?
If I may, yeah. Yeah, the base data is what we call direct emissions. It's electricity and gas is based entirely on metered data from the Office of National Statistics. Unless you don't believe the metering, then it's very, very reliable. Similarly, they're able to measure the amount of fuel being bought for road vehicles, so that's pretty good as well. And one or two other things are based on actual numbers. The only ones that have been modelled, if I remember right, are land use changes and forestry, that's, that sort of thing. But that's basically it. It's a very, what you saw in the second slide in Chris's presentation is based on very accurate data by and large.
Thank you very much, Mr Whitmarsh. And I know councillor Westwood, you have a question, but I actually have a question, if I may. To what extent are you of the opinion that the reduction in carbon needs to come from people actually reducing their own carbon consumption as opposed to an emphasis on technological advancement, getting it out of this mess, or indeed a transition to all renewable energy?
I think that the only thing that's going to make a difference is legislative change. We need both incentives and disincentives coming from government. However, none of those will make any difference if people don't change as well. And indeed, the government won't have the nerve to do it unless people tell them they want them to. So I think we do actually need both sides. We absolutely need legislation to do things like, if you think back to things that have changed, you think back about, you know, all the obvious ones, wearing a seatbelt in a car, wearing a crash helmet, stopping smoking in public. What's happened has been that there's been a simultaneous change in public opinion to the point at which the government has the nerve to change the law. And then all of a sudden, everybody thinks, well, we've done that all the time, it's perfectly obvious. I think we're close to that point on climate change because people have been so struck by what's been happening this last year. But I think that we're approaching the point at which government and local government can step in and can do things like changing parking charges or changing local land rules about new housing or nationally doing these. And the real key point now is to have the nerve to do it.
Thank you for that point. Councillor Westwood, I'm going to try and get onto the body of the paper because I'm conscious it's 20 past nine.
This is a really quick question.
Thank you.
But firstly, I was absolutely agreeing 100% and I'll comment on that change of debate, especially for Bob. The target is net zero, not zero. So my question to Bob is, are your figures on that graph projecting that to net zero or zero? Because that's a different thing.
Well, I appreciate your point. The, I chose, when I made the graph, I just chose zero because the, the aim is to be net zero by 2030. So that's all those two rather steep slopes indicate, just going to net zero by 2030.
Thank you, Mr Whitmarsh. Councillor Cook, Councillor Brooke, do you have any particular questions or can we move on? Okay, thank you. And then I believe Will Adne from the Wessex Green Hub, you're going to take us through the next central part of, of this report. Well, I think when we spoke before this meeting, we asked you to, to go through in about 15 minutes and would very much appreciate it if, if you could take just 15 minutes and then we'll be plenty of time for questions and then. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. I'm very mindful of the fact you've been in this meeting for three hours. I'm very sorry not to be with you in person. I'm actually speaking to you from a very wet field in the middle of Gloucestershire, so hopefully my phone is going to hold up. Let me just bring up the slides. And in the usual way we've become accustomed to, could someone just confirm that that's worked?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much, Chairperson, and to the committee for the invitation to present our work. I'm presenting on behalf of Wessex Green Hub and my colleagues Savitri Bartlett and Tammy Sinha, who are on the call and will be available for questions as well. And I will do my absolute best to, to get through this in 15 minutes. I would just remind members that there is a more detailed summary report that has already been issued. There will be a much more detailed full report, and I'd just like to, to also say that we have offered kind of a more informal discussion session later in the year, if that was of interest, to, to discuss what is a very complicated and detailed subject. What I'll be presenting on today is a very, very brief summary of, of those reports. So we're delighted to be able to share with you our initial concept for a roadmap. How do we get from where we are now to where we need to get to? We've seen those graphs this afternoon. We've, we've heard from members and officers what the challenges are. And the piece of work that we've done is, is to try and find a way of putting a roadmap together. How could we do that to get from where we are to a climate neutral position some point in, in the future for Winchester district? To put it another way is how can we make Winchester a home for thriving people in a thriving place, respecting the wellbeing of all people and the health of the whole planet? So how can we make Winchester thrive, combining the social goals with ecological ones, our local aspirations for our district and our global responsibilities, and bring everyone together to do that? The piece of work that I'm describing started last autumn, last November in fact, when Wessex Green Hub was invited by Winchester City Council to help them run a series of, of activities that were named Portrait of Winchester. And this started with a first workshop in November to first of all imagine what a future Winchester might look like. And then to discuss across 10 predefined sectors, what would those sectors look like? What, what might the future be for those sectors in 2030 and 2040? Education, transport, circular economy, agriculture, 10 different, different areas, but clearly with, with overlaps. And that generated a whole series of ideas that were then prioritised and run into a second session in December, where really specific initiatives and policies were identified by members of the public who, who attended those sessions. They were, they were publicly open sessions, of course, run online at that point where we were last, last December, that identified some very specific actions that those, those members of the public thought the council could, could take forward. Jumping forward, I co-hosted with, with Rob Hopkins of Transition Network, a session of four elected members and senior officers, again, to do a bit of a dreaming, what would a future district look like? What would a district that flourished and thrived look like? And we again collected a whole set of ideas there. And the final, fourth part of that is the Imagine Winchester, which is now a Facebook platform, and as part of Green Week, we've been running a series of events at the Discovery Centre. In fact, if you go there now, there's a wall up in the café area for, for local people, visitors to put up ideas of, again, for this thriving future Winchester. But what do we do with all of this? When we had collected after the first two workshops, these ideas, these initiatives, the challenge was to say, well, how do we, how do we take them forward? How do we prioritise them? What's the, that was really the exam question that was set to us by the council. How do we align them? So we went away and looked at this, and in the report, it describes a bit more detail, but we've taken the approach of donor economics to do this. And this is an approach you may well have heard of. It's a new way of thinking that thinks about economics, not just in a sense in financial sense, but in a much more holistic, regenerative way. First developed about 10 years ago by Kate Rayworth at Oxford University and with Oxfam, it's a way to, to, to think really about what do we need as humanity and what does the planet need? And kind of really importantly, this isn't just something that we've whistled up, these are really robust ideas that are currently being put into place in, in, in cities like Cambridge, in regions like Cornwall, in nations like Wales, as well as cities around the world. And our, our work has, has looked and studied and reviewed what's been going on in other places, particularly in Amsterdam, which is probably in the lead of this. We've been talking to Melbourne again, and we're very happy to We've been talking to Melbourne again, and we're very happy to share the detail behind that. I guess the key message here is the provenance of this, that it's really growing momentum around the world. And what is it? What is this doughnut? Well, very simply, you see it here in the light green. And what it is, it's a space between a social foundation and ecological ceiling that is safe and just and regenerative for us as humanity. That's to say, there's a level below which no human being deserves to fall. And that includes the sort of Maslowian concepts of water and shelter and food, but goes beyond that to talk about education and income, political voice, gender equality, connectivity. So there's a certain minimum that's required. And yet, at the same time, to provide that, we can't just take everything we want from this earth. So there's an ecological ceiling, there's a planetary boundary around things like air pollution, climate change, which we've heard about, biodiversity loss, which you published a report on, ocean acidification, many different areas. And this is all drawn from sort of deep science that Rayworth studied to produce this. And this is kind of the, on the left-hand side, you see it's not for Winchester, but we could produce this for Winchester. This is a kind of a global perspective. Red shows where things are not good. So for the social foundation, where we're really not achieving the minimum that we need. And for the ecological ceiling, the planetary boundaries, we're well exceeding those. You see that a lot of red there on the left, the current situation. And what we're thinking about, whether it's about climate change and carbon emissions, which we've talked about, but about all of these elements, trying to get to somewhere which is much more balanced, whether we achieve it with no red is another question. But the ambition would be to have as little red as possible on the right-hand side. So how do we do that? By creating a roadmap. And that's what we've talked about in our report, starting from, well, they've got nine M's here. This is built on some work that's done in Amsterdam. Nine M's, so saying what is the current state of the city, mirroring the current position. Where do we want to get to? The mission. Bringing together changemakers, decision makers, both, you know, in the city council, but it would also be elsewhere in the county council, in business, charities, residents, et cetera. Mapping what we're planning to do, what you're already planning to do, and I'll come on to that. But it's also about mindset. It's also about changing the way we do things. Quantification is really important and that's come up already tonight. So this is very much an approach that's not just theoretical, but is underpinned by quantitative analysis, measurement of indicators, so that we can actually see our progress, monitor it, dashboard it, and show it to the public. It's about building momentum. And it's also about, in what is a really, really difficult situation we all find, it's about trying to do that in a playful way, trying to bring some energy and some fun into that. So we're working, for example, with the imagination work, Imagine Winchester with local schools, scout groups, with young people. How do we not frighten people in what we're doing? But this isn't just theoretical. We have reviewed the studies or some of the studies that are out there. Not going to say we've looked at everything. For example, the new GEDS is something that came out in parallel with what we've done. But it's absolutely compatible. We've looked at the neutrality action plan. We've looked at biodiversity. But we've also looked at reports that haven't been published by the city council, but rather by the county council and by the town forum. And what we've concluded is these absolutely can be aligned. The opportunity that the doughnut presents is to produce a holistic framework that aligns the initiatives and the strategies and the plans that are within all of these different reports. But not just a strategic approach. This isn't a tool that can only be used to align the overall strategies. It can also be used at a level of the initiative or the project to say, what is the impact? So not just what's the financial impact of this project, but what's the carbon impact? What's the biodiversity impact? What's the opportunity around education, around food, around all of those different dimensions that were shown on the doughnut? And the example I've used here is from Cornwall, where Cornwall have just developed what they've called a decision-making wheel based on the doughnut. And every decision that goes before Cabinet in Cornwall, the officers are asked to produce a version of the wheel to show the impact. And that can be done here in a qualitative sense with this sort of five dimensions. But behind that, it can all be quantified with specific indicators and then measured over time and seeing how the decisions play out in practice. So both the strategic and the tactical level. So the process that we have envisaged here, and again, the detail is in the report, is to say, what is that future vision? That's not for us to fix, but collectively, we can come to, this is the future we want for Winchester. To map it, to measure it for the future, 2040, 2050, to measure it now, where are we now? And Chris presented part of that story just now. And then this is really the crux of it. We then work backwards. We don't just start from where we are now, but we say, if we want to be at this place in 2040 or 2050 or whatever line we choose, we then work back step by step. What are the preconditions each year? What are the initiatives that we would need to put in place in order to get there? And then finally, we can map our current plans, our current initiatives against those to see where the gaps are, to say, will those plans, those initiatives that we have in place now take us to where we want, where we need to be? And where they don't, we can then have a debate and discussion about how do we change those? How do we tweak those? What are the funding gaps? And all of those questions that came up earlier. And I won't go into the detail here, but we were talking about transport. This is an example of how you would do that, your future vision for transport, your current situation. What are those initiatives that you can work back through? So in summary, we are suggesting that the council thinks very strongly about using a doughnut or similar approach. It's a framework that would allow an integration of policies and strategies to address the climate emergency and more. This is an approach that's got strong providence. It's provenance. It's already being used in many, many places. It provides a roadmap for systemic improvement, and that's absolutely key. So someone talked earlier about unintended consequences. Well, this provides that framework that allows us to look at those trade-offs and what those consequences of one decision are. It's important to have a North Star so that collectively, again, you've all talked about kind of working together. Well, what is that North Star for Winchester District? It's not just about one party. It's not just about one council, but what, where do we all believe or want Winchester to be? That we can cooperate and work together. And it's not just about the council or one organisation. It's about a group of individuals bringing everyone together. So our recommendations through the piece of work that you commissioned are that you consider implementing the doughnut as a core framework for your decision-making. I think that it will bring the challenges alive, that line that we talked just now about from 2025 to 30, it's quite dry. But how do we bring that challenge alive? And I think the doughnut can do that. We suggest working together, reaching out to the county council and others. There's an opportunity to provide or to produce a dashboard with quantified indicators so we can really see the impact of those policies and then to check on them. And I suppose the biggest challenge we have here is around defining a future vision. So not just thinking about us, not just thinking about our children or even our grandchildren, but thinking out into the future along the lines of the Future Generations Act that they've enacted in Wales or the Seven Generation Principle. Thinking not just about now, but into the future. And yeah, just leave you with that thought, really the Charles Eisenstein question. How can we do this to create the more beautiful world that our hearts know is possible? How could we use this to make Winchester a place in which everyone thrives? Thank you for listening and I would obviously be delighted to take any questions.
Thank you so much for that passionate presentation. And obviously, there's a huge amount of work that has gone behind, but the report that we have in the Agenda Plan is more detailed and we're proving to be even more detailed draft report that you've produced for the for the Climate Emergency Team. I'm sure members do have some questions on what you've said, what you've said, and I wondered who knew it to start with. There may be an element of exhaustion in the room. And perhaps, perhaps I, oh, Council Brooke, fantastic.
It's not actually exhausting, I'm just going to say I don't have a question. I just found, I've read your report before the presentation and I found everything's said really interesting and it's really self-explained throughout. So that's why I have my questions.
Thank you, Council Brooke, and that's testament, Will, to the quality of your presentation. And Councilor Cook is certainly making a flower. Excellent presentation, sorry. And perhaps I can ask one question and then I'll leave to Councilor Croyston. In your presentation, and welcome Tammy, nice to see you again, Dr Tammy Sinha, she's just come on screen. You talked about achieving equilibrium between sort of basically what individuals should enjoy and living within the sort of of ecological boundaries. And you were talking about, you mentioned 2040 or 2050. So a question I have for you is, given that we've set such an ambitious timeframe for our own target to become carbon neutral and really to address the climate emergency by 2030, do you think that there's time between now and then to achieve that equilibrium? Or does this whole process or would this whole process in reality take a lot longer to achieve? Thank you.
Well, I think that it's about priorities. And I think what the framework allows you to do is to say, what are our priorities? And if carbon neutrality is the priority, then there may be those, not so much unintended consequences, but intended consequences, that other things may follow. So you can absolutely use it to set a climate, a challenge for carbon neutrality by 2030. And I do believe with the right policies, and not just at a local level, clearly at a national and international level, it is possible by 2030. But what this model allows you to do is see the impact of that on on other parts of both the social foundations and other environmental impacts, such as was raised earlier, that maybe people have to put their hands in their pockets or have to choose to do things differently. It allows us to demonstrate really clearly that we can't achieve that 2030 target without giving up things, without reducing our, whatever it is in other areas. It's those trade-offs that become very clear, I think.
Thank you very much, Will. And for me, some of the appeal is it does align you to look at and understand those trade-offs. I think that's really important. Tammy, you came on screen and you did have your hand up. Did you want to answer anything?
I just wanted to thank you all for the opportunity for us to do this work, first of all, but also to share it with you. And just to reiterate what Will was saying is that when we use the approach of the doughnut, we are looking at how communities, individuals and the environment can thrive and how it can flourish. And I think that's really important, that we're coming to this work with a really positive message, that there will be hard decisions to make and we're using the forward path and the backward path on our roadmap so that we can think, well, what are the really difficult decisions that need to be taken, working forward or backwards around the different dimensions that we've looked at? And I really hope it lands well with everyone. We've worked with quite a few other cities who've been looking at this. They've shared with us what they've done and it's been really inspirational to see what they've achieved. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you and thanks, Will, for presenting the work that's been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Councilor Croyston, you had a question?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So thank you very much for the presentation. There's a lot about it that I like. I can see that there's a huge amount of stuff behind this, so we've just scratched the surface today. I'll get straight to the question now, which is, I'm wondering what are the characteristics of a geographic area where you could successfully adopt this approach, this kind of doughnut approach? Or are there any particular characteristics? What I'm thinking of there is, I know that Cornwall is one of the examples. Cornwall has a very distinctive identity. People identify with being Cornish and you have an authority that is in place in Cornwall. You could say the same about Wales, although that might not be quite so, maybe more disparate. And even Cambridge has a very clear identity and a distinctive area. So my question is really pointing at the issue of what Winchester District is as opposed to Winchester the city. Winchester District covers quite a large area. If I think about the southern parishes, they perhaps more often identify with places like Farrow or Portsmouth, whereas those up in the north identify with Winchester. So what I'm getting at here is, is there a scope thing that kind of defines what would be the ideal geographic scope to implement this kind of approach?
Thank you for the question. I think it's an absolutely brilliant question and it gets to the heart of it. We haven't got time to discuss, and I'd love to have this conversation separately. For me, it starts in a sense with a watershed. It starts with a living system. It's actually the living, it's not artificial boundaries that have been laid over them by politicians drawing lines on a map or administrators drawing lines on a map. I think, but at the same time, the decisions are being made in those political areas. So I think we have, our organisation is called Wessex Green Hub deliberately because Wessex is no longer a political area. But I would say it needs to take account of, in our instance, the parishes, the town forum, the district council, the county council, but also talking to Portsmouth, talking to Southampton. It can't just sit within those political boundaries. At the same time, it's got to start somewhere. And I think that starting is really with the people, because the people will identify with where they identify from. So that's, I don't think there's a clear answer to your question, but I think it is a really important question to ask.
Council Westwood?
Thank you, Chair. Will, another question is similar, but from a different angle, really. What are the key groups need to be engaged in Winchester to help us frame a roadmap and the trade-offs that we need to make?
No, I'm going to ask, just because I think from equity, would Tammy or Savitri, would either of you like to answer that?
Will, I'm not sure. Oh, no, we do have Tammy. No, yes, we do. Thank you.
Hello, could you repeat the question, please? I just missed it.
Of course. It's similar to the previous question, but from a different angle, really. What are the key groups need to be engaged in Winchester to help us frame our roadmap and the trade-offs that we need to make?
So one of the cool things with this is that we asked some very, very important questions about how can the people of Winchester and district flourish? And how can we ensure that the environment can flourish as well? So we look at all stakeholders within the roadmap and ensure that the voice is there. So when we were looking at the preparatory work for this approach, we were very careful to have a look at as many pieces of work as we could, to have a look at what has, all the amazing work that's been done already, and to ensure that that's honoured and that is part of the whole story. And we all know that this is not an easy thing to do. It's a massive challenge and we can do that collectively. And I think it's how we weave that sort of story of hope into this as well, so that people are enabled to act and that we all take responsibility to use the agency that we've got. I hope that's answered your question. I'm not sure if it has.
Councillor Westwood?
Paul, we're thank you.
Thank you.
Could I just add to that, I wonder? Because we spoke to Willow Beres from Melbourne, because they had run the doughnut economics model in Melbourne. And what was so interesting about that discussion with Willow was that they had worked from the grassroots up and then from the top down. And there was kind of this meeting in the middle. And it was working with disenfranchised groups. So certainly within Melbourne itself, it was about acknowledging the Aboriginal people. It was then working with other, the businesses within the sector. So there were all these different strata that they brought together in those meetings. And I think, just to give you an example, I'm actually working in London. I come from a clothing background, so I'm working with the British Fashion Council. And we are interested in looking at London in the same way, using this doughnut model. But it would be breaking up the city into sectors and interviewing people from very different parts of London, different socio-economic groups, different ethnic groups. So I think, once we get started, we'll begin to see who the groups are that we can engage with. That would be my response.
Thank you, Dr Bartlett, and you're very welcome. It's good to see you. Councillor Williams, do you have a question?
Yes, no, I do have a question. Thank you. I think one of the things that's sort of interesting, as I'm feeding off of what Dr Bartlett was just saying, about engaging those groups. I know one of the things that often sort of gets touted about being somebody who's an eco-worryer or doing stuff like that, is often it's for people who have money and the sort of resources to be able to do it, people who can afford to buy new electric cars, who can afford to go and shop in plastic-free shops and do that sort of part of it. And I suppose it's how do we do that in a town or city that is actually well seen? I know from my work that I've done with charities, we have a lot of deprivation that sits in Winchester. And actually, being poor in a rich area is incredibly difficult. It's much tougher because we don't have the same resources they have in places like Southampton and Portsmouth. And how do we engage with those groups when, again, because without making them feel like they're having to make more of a sacrifice or there's a bigger impact on them because of those unintended consequences that we talked about when we talk of transport? How do we go about doing that?
Who would like to try to answer that one? So it's very appealing on screen. Will, you look possible?
Yeah, I can, I can. I mean, it's, again, it's a really, really important question. And I, you know, I say this from the privilege of being, you know, a white, male, middle-class, well-educated person. And I think, in a way, that all needs to be stripped away. And we've got to start from the level of humanity. And saying, there isn't a straightforward answer, but certainly it's not, it's not top-down. I think the way that it was described by Savitri a few minutes ago, as Melbourne have done, is to say, needs those conversations, meeting people where they are, whether that's through their socio-economic position or their ethnicity or whatever prism, meeting people where they are. And then, top-down, the authorities can provide that framework that it sits within. Because the framework will allow anything, but it's to meet people absolutely where they are, but not imposing that framework top-down. It's growing it up, but with that overview that brings everything together. So whoever you are, you have a space within that. And I know that sounds a little bit nebulous, to try and do this justice in a couple of minutes on a Zoom call is, I think, virtually impossible. Again, I just acknowledge the importance of the question.
Thank you, Will. Mr Lincoln, Steve, you'd like to make a comment?
Yeah, I just thought I'd add something there. I thought I would need to write tonight compared to my colleagues, because the questions were being directed towards our external colleagues. But one of the things that sort of struck me in relation to councillor Williams' question is that the concept of the doughnut is very much looking at that sort of inner ring, at those social consequences in terms of people who are, I don't know, looking at a level below which you cannot go. So this isn't really focusing on, I don't know, what we might call the first-world problems of, you know, some of the actions we might be asking people to take in those things, which are an inconvenience to people who are used to living a comfortable life. But actually, it's looking at that approach where, you know, where is this really impacting on people and taking it below a level which is actually acceptable? So I sort of think this doughnut model is really sort of focusing on that issue of people who are, you know, who, whose life is not quite so easy and actually is very relevant in that regard.
Thank you, Mr Lincoln. Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Chair. On page 75 of the report, it shows you a number of pieces of literature that's from the county and Winchester, as in Winchester City Council. I just wanted to ask, with regard, you referred to working with Cornwall Council and you mentioned Melbourne. Has this document been shown to anybody at Hampshire County Council? That you have presented to us today, please? Thank you.
I know that the report was commissioned for Winchester City Council and we have only shared it with you.
Mr Lincoln, you still have your microphone on? Thank you. I actually have a question possibly for the cabinet member for Economic Recovery and the cabinet member for Climate Emergency on this. You talk about the doughnut economics being a new economic mindset. And we've just recently, as I mentioned earlier, had the Green Economic Development Strategy come exposed to everyone at the housing policy committee. And that talks about a new generation strategy. And it does look more holistically, not just economic development and jobs, but it also talks about leveling up, it talks about resilience in terms of climate. And the question I have is, both of these frameworks, structures is called for a whole team approach from the council. They call for officers to embrace one or other and to use it to drive decision-making within the council. And so my question to both of you is, how do we, how would we marry the both of them? And equally, taking on board these hit and miss comments within the transport team about the level of work that officers have to do, their bandwidth to take on new ideas? Is there a contention where we are just asking too much? How do we sort of scroll back circle? So it's quite a challenging question for both of you. Thank you. And who would like to go first, councillor Murphy or councillor Todd?
I think it's a very good question. I think there's a few thoughts. Because also in terms of joining people up, there's also, again, as we talked about earlier, is the county and other players in the area of economic development. What we did with the Green Economic Strategy, Development Strategy, is as part, when they asked us what you wanted to do in Hampshire, we gave them the Green Economic Strategy and said, well, we've got this stuff on education, transport, these are all the things where we need to collaborate together, not just with you, but other bits of the system. What's interesting today, and I am visibly on some levels reassuring, was that the leader of Hampshire County Council said, well, look, even if we don't end up with a new deal, we will be, we understand now much better what kind of things we're trying to get at, where you're going to go. Interestingly, we sent our Green Economic Strategy to the person at Hampshire who's working with the Economics Foundation on their green recovery strategy. And have agreed that, you know, we're going to sit down together and see who carries which bit. Two thoughts, three thoughts. One is certainly the Green Economic Development Strategy. What comes next is the action planning and we need to be mindful of the other things that the council is trying to do at the same time. The second thought is, and so the second thought is, we mustn't underestimate the effort required for execution. And it's quite easy to write strategies. And he talks about pedestrianising the square. That was a, it's small closure in the middle of Winchester. It was a huge effort of co-production, working with residents and businesses to understand what their needs were, to implement something that has quite a big impact, but is difficult change. So we need to make sure we're not just writing strategies, but we leave time for that co-development of actual plans for people that we actually implement and the details that you have to get right before people buy into them. And then I suppose the third thought, we probably need, we need a discussion within the council about the tools that we're going to use to aid decision-making. So we can have frameworks and that's great. We need to think about how they fit together. We then need to actually lock in on a few things that we're going to execute with excellence. And then we also need to give people, as well as frameworks, sort of simple tools that they can be using to understand how they're doing, particularly on questions of carbon and perhaps on terms of the doughnut economics. So that, you know, you don't need a PhD to work out, how am I doing? But it's something which people can relatively easily assess how they're doing. So that's maybe a challenge back on this particular project.
Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Chair. I mean, I sort of agree with you, like, the decision-making wheel when it comes to cabinet papers earlier, and I think that is quite a simple way of working out what's going on. But I noticed that, you know, Will and his team, they did look at the Green Economic Development Strategy. So I would actually like to put the question to them, to say, how do you, you know, Will, how do you feel that the two of you could work together?
I think, Will, that you actually commented that you hadn't had a chance to look at it because of the timing. I don't know whether you've managed to look at it since or it was already published.
Yeah, I think, I think having had a quick glance at it, it's absolutely passable. But I think, as we've said, it was published actually after we produced our report. And one of the things in our detailed recommendations is that that piece of work is done almost immediately, that sort of a comparative analysis of the two pieces of work is carried out. And they're not a huge piece of work, but just to actually see how they align. So I think I completely agree with you, councillor Murphy, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any more questions? Do we have any more, do we have any debate? It's not any more debate. Do we have any debate on this? I know it's 10 o'clock. I apologise for the lateness of the hour and I really like that you are still colleagues and still being with us. I know it's still. You want to debate, councillor Brooke? There we go. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Will and Dr Sinna and Dr Bartlett for their input this evening, for the great reports they've put in front of us. I mean, there's a lot of food for thought and we honestly don't have a lot of thinking time. We need to act. So actually opening up those thoughts for us speeds us along that process. I just want to say thank you.
Councillor Williamson?
Just a little bit of debate. I suppose it's really, I just wanted to sort of say that this whole thing, and I think the realisation that finding has been dawning on people, though it's taken a long time, is that there has to be a fundamental shift in what we do. And that fundamental shift has to come now, not in five years, not in 10 years. It has to come now, that we need to stop taking for granted things that, you know, lots of us, I have two cars in our house and, you know, we talked about how to get rid of one and how to cope with public transport. We need to be making sure people are having those discussions and there are viable options for them to be able to do it. And so that you realise that actually you have to make that change and, you know, that you will get on that bus because it's there, not, you know, have the excuse, well, I can't because, you know, you then need, it takes you four hours, that's insane. So there has to be ways that we can make those changes and help as a council. But we equally need to be pushing it back on our citizens and actually making people realise, like for me, when I'm lazy and I think, oh, I'll just drive, I literally have the number one bus and I can use it. I mean, not tonight, because it would be crazy going home, but after, you know, a full day. But why couldn't I? But really, we need to make it so people think, actually, that is viable and they will do it. There you go.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. I apologise for adding their son on the interview. Councillor Westwood?
Chair, it's just a follow-up on how it's done this there, council. I think it's a great framework, it's a great dashboard and we certainly need it in the country, that we can relate to our projects and understanding the implication, the outcomes that it will affect. Certainly the KPIs, the targets, and this will be the term, and so we need to be a leading voice. I don't think we're a leading voice. We need to be far more vocal, far more presence across the community, showing that we're leading, we need it at the county level, with our local businesses, with our residents and across all areas that we have to work with. We have to save people on the journey and they're going to have to want to come with us, so we need consensus of those people, exactly what you're saying. But the but is, it comes at a cost. And none of this is for, to live in a way that is a sustainable world. It's not something that is just businesses, you should carry on as we are today. So my takeaway from this is, great framework, great approach, but we need to be more prominent in leading this across the community.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. Would anybody else like to add to councillor Brooke?
If I may, Chair, thank you. I'd like to echo the words that councillor Westwood said and to follow on from that. And I see it many times around. And that is, we don't have, there isn't a Planet B, there aren't option Bs, but Planet B, there is not. This is an excellent framework and I would say that we would most definitely, as a council and as a county, we do need to work more together. And this is a great way forward. So thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Can I ask anybody who's with us virtually to make sure their microphones aren't turned off, because we're getting a little bit of feedback in the room? I would equally echo the comments that have been made. And I think it was Dr Sinna who said, you know, we need to energise the community, we need to evolve them, we need to make them want this. And we know from Will's report that there is an appetite, the views that there is a greater appetite. There's a slight watch out, I believe, in that what we don't want to do is to do more consultation, more talking, more going out in the community, when I think it was Mr Gag said, you know, it was 845 days since we declared the climate emergency. Do you think that was the right number? I think that was the right number of days, Mr. Gadd. And, um, you know, we can't spend another year talking. You know, the crisis is happening, is happening there. Um, we are as a committee, we were asked to, um, to note the latest submissions that are emerging from the Winack's, um, report. And we, we thank you very much for that and we look forward to seeing the more detail that comes with that. Um, and I know you answered the question about where, what would be the appropriate forum to present that more detailed reports and your ideas coming from. Um, I will ask perhaps, um, Mr. Lincoln, um, and Ms. Robins to think about best place for that. Um, we were asked also to note the intention to procure, you know, um, more consultancy support in developing a roadmap. And it's really clear that as a city council, we have the intention, we have the ambition, we have the desire. But we do need that roadmap to tell us how we are going to get there. And we do need the metrics and the KPIs and we do need to look actively and we need to look at and understand the unintended consequences, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I, I find donut economics, um, you know, I, I, I'm in many ways an advocate of it because I feel that being able to look at the, the sort of social justice elements to look at the impact on individuals as one, kind of seeing, um, both really important. Um, I would however, um, like officers to note that there is an element of caution that we don't want to overload officers who are already working to the very edges of their capacity with, with more work to do, um, rather than just getting the job done. That would be my, my own, my own concern. Um, there's no more debate done and I shall do my final thank you. Um, I'd like to thank, um, our public speakers who's spoken tonight, Mr. Gadd and Mr. Gillan. Um, I'd like to thank Chris Followey for, um, for helping us develop this final paper. Um, as well as the members of Wessex Green Hub, Dr. Bartlett, Dr. Smith, Sinna and, um, Will, I've made a very excellent, um, report. I'd also like to thank the president for being here and for letting you, for, um, Democratic Services for making this happen. I'd like to thank the cabinet members who've been with us this evening, councillor Murphy, councillor Todd and, um, councillor Cleer. I'd also like to thank the members of the committee for staying with us. I apologise, it has gone much longer than we might desire. But I found all of these papers were worthy of the discussion and debate that we had this evening. Um, thank you for your time and to everyone who stuck with us remotely and listening. Um, I'm so happy that you've enjoyed the discussion this evening and seen value in what has been covered. So with that, and further ado, um, if you're hungry, I hope you can find a meat and I wish you all good night. Thank you.